Call the meeting to order, please. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Thursday, October 4th, 2018. The time is 7:00. Please call the roll.
President Sal.
Here.
Trustee Jiza.
Here.
Trustee Lumsden.
Here.
Trustee Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Setteby.
Here.
Trustee Peters.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Malina.
Here.
Also present Village Clerk Haley. Trustee Palak is not with us this evening.
Thank you very much. If you'll please join us for the pledge.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to everyone who is here tonight and everybody watching at home. We have special guests with us here tonight. We have PAC 24, the Cub Scout PAC 24. They came in a little bit earlier tonight and were able to talk with me and our police and fire chief about village government. And we're looking at the future leaders of our village right here in front of us. So, welcome to them. First up this evening is public comment. If you'd like to make a comment to the board, I ask that you do it from the podium so that the folks at home can hear and see what you have to say. Just tell us your name and your address. So would anyone like to address the board? Please.
My name is Stephen O'Donnell. I'm here with my wife Megan O'Donnell. We're from 510 Berkeley Road. And our public comment tonight, I think we've corresponded via email, I know, with Mr. Sal's, Mr. Ballerine. Thank you for your prompt responses. We appreciate that. This is basically to follow up on a proposal to, or at least start the dialogue of what to do about blocking off Berkeley Road, which we view, and we've spoken with many of our neighbors and also provided their comments as to how they feel about blocking off Berkeley Road so that it's not connected to Harlem directly for traffic to and from. So I think we've sent the proposal, so, you know, I understand, you know, we don't necessarily want to jump to a dramatic conclusion, but we definitely agree to a temporary blocking and then, you know, for several months maybe, and then we study the effects of that. I think everybody on our block and also on Bird is definitely on board with that. So we kind of would like to know, you know, what we can do to assist and what next steps we can take to kind of get the ball rolling.
I think you've done a great job in presenting us with the diagrams and your concerns, and of which we all agree. We were fully aware of what happened to you and your family and how traumatic an event that was. The, and I've said all of this to you in emails, the way this board typically operates when we're going to do something like that is we want to know if we're going to take action something about, on that kind of magnitude, how does it affect the rest of the village? So, right now, we have been in the midst of preparing our budget for next year, which is really a full-time job. Once that is completed, we have sent your proposal to both of our police and fire chiefs. They are both reviewing it. So rest assured that it is not languishing somewhere in a drawer, and it will be considered in due course. The main thing we have to figure out, and this would require probably going back to our traffic engineers, our traffic consultants, is, you know, first get an idea of the traffic count on Berkeley. And then, your idea is probably the best one of trying a trial run where we would barricade it. There are, I mean, I've been over there a number of times myself to look at the, how everything's kind of put together over there. Some of the complications, of course, is 2704, which was the Title Max building, has a curb cut, you know, off of Berkeley. And then the condominiums there on Harlem have, also have a driveway that comes out into Berkeley.
Oh, we never want to like, we would want to kind of connect them and have them be part of what would become like a cul-de-sac, essentially. We just want to prevent the in and out and the traffic, which all it does is just feed from Berkeley down to Bird, and then that's, Bird's a dead end by the tracks there, and then it just connects to Long Common. None of our neighbors or any of the residents nearby mind just going onto Long Common and then around, but that through traffic, people are speeding through there regularly. I mean, we see it constantly, and it just doesn't need to happen. Also, you know, it leaves us exposed, you know, to people that can come into the village and then quickly get out back onto Harlem, like in the instance of my house.
My point, my point with regard to the condominiums is if you look at where their driveway is in proximity to the curb cut for the 2704, which we cannot block off. Obviously, we can't block off access to that property because that would be taking the property rights of that landowner. So, these are the complications that will be considered, but it is not being ignored. Nobody up here has said that they think it's either a bad or a good idea. I mean, we kind of have a tradition up with this board that we are very careful. We make our decisions based on data. We don't want to just respond, you know, to a traumatic event like what happened to you and make decisions before we know that we have the proper backup so that we understand the problem. Because keep in mind that, yeah, I think we have close to 20 streets in Riverside that go into our peripheral streets. So any kind of, any kind of, if we're going to have to develop criteria and standards with regard to your request, that would be applicable to other streets. Because we've had other, we've had other streets ask us for exactly the same thing. So instead of just saying, okay, yeah, we'll do that, you know, we need to, we need to develop a method and a protocol so that when other people come to us, we can make a decision based on the same standards.
That we completely understand and agree with, but at the same time, too, we also made sure to go to, and I think in the emails you'll see statements from what, Megan, eight or nine neighbors, our direct neighbors, that's probably over half the houses that live on the street that we were able to get a hold of, to provide their statements, and they were all very much on board. And this is coming from the people that live there. That is the data, you know, in our opinion of how we feel about this and how important this is to us.
Well, I, there's no doubt that you feel that way. But our responsibility, when I say data, I mean that we have to, we need to have an idea of how, what you're proposing would affect other streets and other residents who maybe don't live on Berkeley or Bird. So that is relevant as well. So we have to take their concerns and the effect that that kind of action might have on them into account as well.
Of course. And again, I understand, like, every street is different and has different scenarios and circumstances, so it's hard to kind of maybe have a blanket policy. With our street, though, just only connecting to Long Common, which is obviously a main thorough street through Riverside, we kind of do feel that it is a different situation than a lot of these other streets. Because all it's doing is literally Berkeley to Bird, that's a dead end, and then just connecting to Long Common. So we feel it's largely unnecessary that it connects to Harlem, because, I mean, you can't even make a left out of there onto Harlem because of all the traffic. You have to go to Long Common anyway. So, you know, we do feel it's kind of a different situation than maybe many of the other streets.
And I'm not disagreeing with you. It's just that we're going to go through our due diligence and have a process that we can apply village-wide.
So, just before, you know, before I finish, what do we feel the next steps are in maybe trying to move forward at least towards the temporary closure so we can get some data and, you know, some understanding? Because that's definitely something we're interested in happening as soon as possible.
I mean, I can't answer that question right now. Until we, until we take it up as a board and start and have our consultants and our public safety people look at it, I, we have to have data before I could even get to that point. And we don't have that data at this point.
What I can share with you is I went out there this weekend and looked around. I was the one out there with a tape. So if anybody saw me, that was me. Just to try and figure out what the options were. Because I know in years you kind of talked about cul-de-sacs and things, and those have certain turner radiuses. From a technical perspective, there's also the T-bone type of an end that's a common one as well. So again, I think with the business district piece going on over there and that, there are going to be some opportunities to kind of look at what we're doing on that area. So it hasn't fallen on deaf ears. I mean, I received this weekend and earlier from somebody over at the high school and then took the time to go over and look. So we'll start to talk amongst ourselves to try and figure out what's the right thing to do over there.
Great. We appreciate it. We just, you know, I know Megan did a great job with the diagrams and just showing, these aren't exactly necessarily how it has to be, but just an example of what it might look like, some potential ideas, and, you know, how other streets have done it, to also make it a more attractive entrance into Riverside, which we feel Long Common should kind of be, and also securing our street of Berkeley and Bird. So we appreciate your time, and we'll definitely follow up.
I think we probably at least have the police and fire and Public Works take a ride out there and see if they do some sort of, I mean, it would have to be some sort of temporary S barricade, because you got, you got the condos on one side and the excess. At least to see if it's going to be a safety issue, or, you know, can waste management, can the trucks go back there? Can garbage still get picked up from the condos? Is that going to cause any problems? So I think from, you know, from our standpoint, at least we can get some of our department heads out there to just, to take a look.
Okay.
Because I do think that is, I do think that's a different street than most, and the other one that comes to mind is York. I, you know, that used to be an alley. So it's not like some of the other streets. So that, it's, it's, it's in the minds.
Oh, ourselves and all the other residents of Berkeley appreciate the time and the consideration.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Hey, Ed. Do we own Jersey blocks? Does the village own Jersey blocks? Traffic barrier? We don't own any? Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to, please?
Hi, Lindsay Morrison, 421 Repton. And I wanted to come and speak out my concerns about having red light cameras, based just on my experience, which is primarily with right turn on reds. Because my car, cars of mine have gotten right turn on reds. We haven't gotten any through, straight throughs. But part of that is, looking at what happened, the videos that they provide, you can look and see, my car, the car stopped within, you know, when a light came, stopped completely, didn't move on to turn right for, you know, more than five seconds. The counter's there. But if you look, it wasn't completely behind a white line. And also, you can see when the yellow, you know, the yellow's captured as well. So, looking at that, not having, having come to a complete stop, not having caused a safety problem, not having any pedestrians moving on in time, you know, you look at that, okay, well, I don't think I caused it any safety or, and did anything illegal, but I don't know how and what the appeals process is. And the appeals process of going to another village somewhere else in an afternoon when there's only a couple hours and taking the time off work, you know, that's a trade-off. Is it worth it? You know, or am I just going to say I'm going to write the check? So those are some of my concerns around red lights on right turns specifically, because I don't think that there's data that shows that that's a real safety issue, in general that cameras solve that. So I think that's challenging. I, having read through the materials, I don't know what the adjudication process is going to be if we move ahead with this, you know, in terms of, says the village. So, but beyond that, what is that and what's the availability? I don't know if the review officer is, you know, an employee of Riverside and, you know, if what they're being paid in their salary is coming through the revenue. So that's kind of a question as well. I don't know what kind of data we're going to get back from the company in terms of how many, you know, how many they're sending to the police, you know, to our department to look at, how many tickets are actually given, how many of those are from going straight through or for going, you know, on red turns. So what kind of data are we going to get back to understand the value of this versus just, you know, a dollar figure? And will that information be made available to the public? I think some of the challenges on the red light on the right turn specifically is I understand we can decide how much time a car has to sit to be considered a complete stop, and that that can be different for different municipalities and that that can change. So that's kind of concerned to me that if, on the right turns, is that a standard, is a person, would that change if we're not getting enough tickets? Would that time change? You know, so how is that going to be determined and how communicated to the residents? So that's part of my concern. On the issue itself, in general, I come here a couple times a year and want to talk about, ask about data, because that's important, and what data you're using to make the decisions. And I haven't seen the data about how many accidents we have in those intersections, whether or not they're during right turns, how many accidents we couldn't solve fault because we didn't have a camera. So I feel that this is, I don't know that, I haven't seen the data that there is to say this is a safety problem. I think the red light ones, I mean, I'm sorry, I keep saying that, but the right turns are often more about revenue than safety. And so that's, that's a concern of mine, and I would like to encourage the board to use the data, share the data, have more transparency about the process and the adjudication and the why, and how will that information around that adjudication be shared with the community so we understand the value of putting these in and how they're helping us or not? Thank you.
So when we get to that agenda, are you planning on sticking around for the discussion?
Sure. I just didn't know if you were going to ask then or not.
Well, I mean, I made notes, the, I mean, our chief, chief of police has, in the past has addressed all of those issues. So when we get to the discussion, I can have him review that. With regard to the data that, in terms of establishing the need, however, that, that has been shared. That was the Safe Speed analysis that included the crash data. And that, the question of whether or not the data is sufficient to establish the need for such a camera, that is the determination that will be made by IDOT. But in terms of the raw crash data, that, that has been provided in the past with regard to the Safe Speed. But when we get to it, I'll make sure that Chief Whitson reviews all of the questions you ask.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Here's Lindsay.
Yes.
First day?
August 2nd, 2018.
Yes.
That's the.
The last time, though.
That's the, that has all of the stuff you're asking about. All the crash data, all the red light data, everything you're asking for.
Great. Do we, we can ask about adjudication and stuff like that if that hasn't, because I hadn't seen that.
Absolutely. You're very welcome. Anyone else? We'll move on now to the reports of village officers. I just have one thing that I wanted to share with the community. We've had a couple public safety issues come up that are affecting our community presently and that have the potential to affect our community in potentially catastrophic ways. So I'd like to read to you a letter that I sent to all of our federal representatives, both our senators and our congresspeople. This one is addressed to Senator Durbin, but they all said exactly the same thing. "Thank you for your leadership and dedication to protecting the health, safety, and welfare of your constituents. I know that you are aware of the following issues, but given their importance to the residents of the Village of Riverside, I feel compelled to ask for your assistance." The first are the public safety implications of releasing ethylene oxide into the air. The International Agency for Research on Cancer has determined that ethylene oxide is carcinogenic to humans. The U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry recently reported an elevated cancer risk for people living in proximity to facilities that release ethylene oxide into the air. A portion of Riverside is one of those areas, and some of our neighboring communities are even more severely impacted by the release of this dangerous compound. I ask you that you do whatever you can to ensure the public safety, including if necessary, taking steps to close down facilities that release ethylene oxide into the air until a definitive safety standard can be established. Second item, public safety implications of repealing the requirement for electronically-controlled pneumatic braking on trains transporting hazardous materials. Up to 120 trains travel through Riverside every day. Nationwide, 25 million Americans live within the blast zone of potential derailments of trains transporting hazardous materials. The Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration recently repealed a requirement that certain trains transporting hazardous materials be required to install electronically-controlled pneumatic, abbreviation is ECP, braking before 2021. So there was a requirement that ECP braking be installed on these trains before 2021. About a week ago, that was repealed. This repeal was based on a determination that the cost of this requirement was not merited by its benefits. This determination pales in the face of the possible catastrophic consequences of such a derailment. There is no question that such a derailment could devastate the Village of Riverside. I ask that you do whatever you can to reinstate the requirement for installing ECP braking. Sincerely, Ben Salz. A similar letter went out to our state senators and representatives strictly with regard to the ethylene oxide issue. The, the area of Riverside that is within the heightened risk report that was released, really, if you, if you look at the first district, the little peninsula that makes the first district where the scout cabin is, not, not insignificantly, that is the area that is within the map that shows the higher risk for cancer. So the good news is that the governor, in the last day or so, has asked the Illinois EPA to take action on the ethylene oxide issue and has asked for an expedited review. One of the things that we're all asking for is more air testing so that we can actually find out what the current levels of ethylene oxide are present. But it is our hope that a quick resolution will be, will be reached with this, including if necessary, shutting down locations that release this hazardous compound into the air until a definitive standard can be set as to what, if any, release of this compound are warranted. So I just wanted to let you know that your village is aware of these issues and that we are taking whatever action we can at the local level to make sure that we are duly protected. So are there any questions about that at all? Okay, hearing none, that is all I have. We'll move on now to the manager's report.
I have a few items. I wanted to remind residents that the Village of Riverside has been working with the Village of Brookfield for our solar summit. We are co-hosting it on Saturday, October 6th, for homeowners and home builders considering going solar. You can learn about how to go solar with tips from industry experts and village officials. The agenda includes financing options, incentives, and the expected return on investment. We will also tour our homes in both villages to see the completed projects firsthand. This event is free, begins at Brookfield Village Hall at 10:00 a.m. The tours will start at 10:20 a.m. The final presentation with snacks and refreshments will start at 11:30 at Riverside Township Hall. You can register through Friday. And also, we have a direct link on our village website on social media as well. With regard to, I wanted to provide the board and residents an update with regard to some traffic safety initiatives that we've been doing, one being the discussion of the traffic table. So we did have it delivered at Public Works. Both police, fire, and Public Works representatives were actually out onsite online now today, figuring out the appropriate location for that table. And it will be installed within the next two weeks. It'll be there for up to six weeks, because obviously it has to be removed prior to snowfall and snow removal events. Additionally, I wanted to notify residents, and the Riverside review that was sent out in utility bills, so both this month and next month, it stated, it talked about two capital projects that we are anticipating kicking off this year, however, due to timing, are actually being deferred till 2019. Them being the green parking lot and the Metro intersection improvements, so I just wanted to make note of that. Those will start, the green parking lot will, we're targeting for it to begin in the early spring so that it can be wrapped up before the swim club opens, because we've been coordinating that effort with them to utilize their parking lot during that time. Finally, there was a nationwide alert system test earlier this week. Actually Riverside, we have Riverside Responds, and we're actually going to be testing our own system tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. So it will be basically a system, if you get the notification, it'll provide you with the different prompts. It's just to ensure that we have correct information for the residents within our system. If you don't get it and you would like to subscribe, we also have a link on our village website with regard to that. That's all I have.
So this is the blessed moment for PAC 24. This is your opportunity to escape before, before, before we get on to some more business. Thank you for coming to see us. You're very welcome. Next up is the approval of the consent agenda. On the agenda for this evening, before I move on, I just want to, I do want to share one really touching thing while the Boy Scouts were here. I heard of a, just a really sad, sad story that trustee Wendell told us. I don't know if you want to, I know it's traumatic, but if you'd like to share the, your memories of the, of the wheel coming off, your.
The box, well, when the, when the Boy Scouts or the Cub Scouts were here, I told the story about when I was part of PAC 24, during the, during the car race, my wheel fell off about six inches before the end of the finish line. And to this day, 35 years later, I still remember it with great regret. No trophy, nothing, just, just complete disappointment by my father when I got home.
I just want you to know that you, that you're in our thoughts and prayers.
Thank you.
For that.
Every time I go to the train store in Berwyn, I think of that.
The Boy, the Boys, one, one young man, when he told that, the one boy says, ooh, that's harsh. So on, on the consent agenda this evening, approve out your list of bills October 4th, 2018. Approve the Village Board trustees' regular meeting minutes of September 20th, 2018. File and review the following historical commission meeting minutes of July 16. Landscape advisory commission meeting minutes, August 14. Proxation Recreation Board meeting minutes, July 23rd, and the contractor report for August 2018. Also, on the consent agenda is a resolution approving a standard form at-risk construction management contract, designer-led design-build project agreement in the amount of $689,277 with Burke Engineering for the replacement of the Coonley Road and North Gate water mains. Would anyone like anything removed for discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion second to approve.
So.
By Mr. Ballerine.
Second.
By Mr. Setteby. Please call the roll.
Trustee Jiza.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
The motion carries. Next up is reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. Does anyone have anything from their liaison duties? So we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. We have one this evening, which is a resolution of the Village of Riverside, Illinois authorizing and approving the execution of an agreement between Safe Speed LLC and the Village of Riverside relative to an automated traffic law enforcement system. Chief Whitson.
Good evening, Mr. President, trustees, and manager Francis. We're in front of you tonight for the consideration of a contract with Safe Speed that is in your packet. The contract was, over the last several weeks, was tweaked and negotiated between our village attorney, Michael Mars, and the attorney for Safe Speed. And we did obtain some changes in that contract, and I think our attorney could go over those if you so desire. And I could answer any questions that you might have on some of the questions that were asked at the podium before, or how we anticipate the operation of this going. I will tell the board that this is just the start. So we would be in front of you at another time if the board approves a contract to approve a resolution. And I want to make it clear then, I have to, as a chief, I have to submit a packet to IDOT, and IDOT is the final authority. Riverside is not the final authority in either of Safe Speed, so IDOT gets to say whether those go in or not. The anticipated timeline is probably one year, and that would be fast-tracking it. And that comes from IDOT's permitting process, review of the paperwork. They have the opportunity to call us for a hearing, where we would have to go testify in front of them if they so desire to justify why we want those. Those are all possibilities that could happen. So I just want you to know the timeline and then what the other steps are involved in. But I would be happy to answer any questions, or I'm sure if I'm not speaking, our attorney, Malina, could also answer questions about the contract if any board member has those.
According to that, there are a couple interesting things, points to be made, I think, that are in the executive summary that we get, just in terms of background. It notes in here that the agreement includes language specifying that the red light enforcement program will be cost neutral to the village, meaning that the village is not obligated at any time under the agreement to pay the contractor an amount that is in excess of the amounts actually received by the village under the agreement. It also notes that while both parties indemnify the other for their own actions, the village is required under the agreement to indemnify Safe Speed for all claims or challenges. is required under the agreement to indemnify Safe Speed from all claims or challenges to the right and authority of the village to issue citations pursuant to the relevant law. And that's the only two points that I wanted to make on here. Before we before we get to further discussion, though, let's let's get a motion in a second. So I'd ask for a motion to approve a resolution of the Village of Riverside, Illinois authorizing and approving the execution of an agreement between Safe Speed LLC and the Village of Riverside relative to an automated traffic law enforcement system.
So.
By Mr. Ballerine.
Second.
By Mr. Jisa. Chief, before we get into the the nitty-gritty of the of the contract, can we go through some of the questions that were asked during public comment?
Absolutely.
Could you explain a little bit about the adjudication process?
Yes, we currently have an adjudication process, so that would be absorbed into the same process. We currently have that process at nighttime, so residents can attend. It's at Thursdays, and it's here at the village hall on the second floor. We have Riverside personnel at that hearing, and and probably we would have additional equipment there for Safe Speed citations. What I mean by that is, you'd be able to look at your, if you wanted to see your violations, we will be provided a computer that you could look at that, somebody could come in and look at it. There is an appeal process, there is all the standard, we, the adjudicator is a is a civilian employee, not a police employee, he's paid for by us, but it's it's an independent person currently that is hearing the violations. We would have an attorney or judge, retired judge, do this because that's per the state statute. And they would be the determination on whether, just because the officer or the employee says that you went through the red light, or you, you know, violated no turn on red, or you didn't turn safely on red, the judge or the administrator would have that same video there. They are the sole, at the end of the day, what they say goes, if the ticket stays or the ticket is dismissed for lack of evidence. We also can purchase a kiosk if we'd like, and we can have that in the police department lobby for residents to view. It's available on the internet. But we would follow the exact same protocol we do now for our adjudications. It's rare now that a resident will bring a lawyer with them for adjudication because they're minor ordinance violations, but they can. Sometimes on a more serious building code violations, property owners bring their own attorneys. That's why we have an attorney there. And it they're usually adjudicated in some fashion first time up, meaning that there's either compliance, or there's some fines assessed to the violation. So we would follow that same protocol. But the safety statute tells us what we have to do for the red light photo enforcement citations. It clearly tells us.
And then those, if the adjudicator upholds or fines a violation, then there's an appeal also to the circuit court and cookies.
Yeah.
On the record.
Correct.
So it's shipped over there and...
So we would we would follow, for the adjudication of those tickets, we would follow exactly what's written in the current Illinois statute.
So the the next couple of questions are kind of go together in terms of the nature of the data that we would receive from Safe Speed, and then how the actual review of that data would be accomplished.
It's currently all public document. Everything that they produce is a public record. So what happens is, every month, they would give the village a data sheet as to how many violations they send over, they classify those as batches, how many, they're not saying those are violations, they're saying these are violations per the video. The hearing off, our off, our employee looks at those and says, you know, that this is or this isn't. That's after they have the training. And then, at the end of the month, there's a data sheet that says, we say, for example, Safe Speed sent us 500 violations in March. Riverside only said 360 of them were violations. So those would be only 360 citations that went out. And then they 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 give you data on how many paid online, how many didn't pay, how many challenged, what the outcomes of those challenged. Those data is all collected as part of our contract with them, all public information, all delivered. In fact, most communities, if you go to their websites that have red light photo enforcement, you'll see all that data posted on their website every month.
And then, and I've heard this this question from a number of residents, the question asked here tonight was about the timing for the right turns and how how that is determined. Another concern that I I've heard is the the time, the actual timing of the red lights themselves at these intersections and the length of time, for example, a yellow light. There seems to be some concern that, or suspicion that when these cameras go in, there is there's tinkering done with the lights to try to to make it, to to generate more revenue. And you've explained to me in the past, of course, with regard to the red lights, that that is, that's set by the state, the time is set by the state. But could you just talk about that and then talk about how we're going to determine what what the stopping time is that's going to be required for right turns?
So the the village has has nothing to do with the timing of the lights or the yellow lights, that's completely set by IDOT with traffic patterns. And in fact, our lights are tied into a to a larger system that goes basically from almost Roosevelt and 290 all the way to I-55 for a traffic flow. So IDOT regulates all that, we're not allowed to touch any timing devices, yellow or red devices at all. The no turn, or the red, you know, some some communities have, you can turn on red safely as long as there's no pedestrian there, no bicyclist, it depends. The Illinois statute says you must come to a complete stop before or at that painted stop bar that you see. First of all, you have to have the stop bar there for it to be illegal, so you have to have the stop bar, and you have to come to a complete stop, and then you can turn if it's safe, if permitted to do so. The sub-communities don't allow the no the red turn at all, depending, in school zones, for example, if they have their red light near a school zone, there's other places that it's prohibited. If it's not prohibited, you have to just follow that standard. Come to a complete stop and be able to turn safely. That would mean that there's no pedestrian standing there, no bicyclist standing there waiting to cross, there's no other hazard that's in that video there, and that that's pretty standard. But the Illinois vehicle code tells us exactly what the statute is for no turn on red.
But in the past, you've said that 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 differing communities would have a different time that you had to stay stopped, that some communities might say two seconds, might some might say three. I mean, is that is that a determination that this board is going to make as to how long a, what constitutes a stop and how long you have to stay stopped?
No, I would, I would, well, I don't want to speak for the board, but I would tell the board, and I think our attorney would agree with me, the the only way that this program can be ethical and we can stand up and defend ourselves on our actions is follow the state statute. So whatever that state statute says, whatever that Illinois vehicle code statute says is really the only way to go. Are there communities that say we want to be more generous or more, and say that we want it to be three or five seconds? There are some that do that, but that's not what the statute says. So I mean, that, to me, that would be a bad practice, that we should just follow what the Illinois vehicle code says, because that's what officers do on the street. If they're making just a routine traffic stop, they're following the vehicle code, somebody has no headlights, or driving without the taillights, or speeding, they're following the code that's in the Illinois vehicle code. And you correct me if I'm wrong, our village attorney, but I think that is a way that we can defend our actions, especially at hearings.
So in other words, there would be no time attached to it? The only requirement would be a complete stop and that the turn can be safely made?
I know, I have served as, not often, but I have served as a hearing officer for red light adjudication in communities where we're not the village attorney. What I do is, is when you see the red light, as Chief Weitzel said, you look at the surrounding area, you look for the line, you have to be able to see the line, and then what I look for is, you can see the wheels turning as the stop. And a lot of them, it's pretty clear, the wheels never stop turning. And I've had people say, but I stopped. And they're looking at it, and you're saying, show me where the, you know, and they won't accept it. But if you can tell when the wheels stop moving, and if they stop moving, it's not a, it's not a violation, as long as those wheels stop turning completely. I don't think it it has to be one second, two seconds, unless something else is in that video to be considered.
In other words, if an officer was standing there on that corner, and the infraction or someone went through that light, and they got a ticket, an officer would have given him a ticket if he was there personally and on the spot?
Yes.
Okay. It's not the camera deciding, it's, the same decision would have been made by an officer if an officer was there.
Correct, the camera's just giving you the data for you to review.
Just a more efficient way of having a policeman on the corner. And the second question I have is, a couple paragraphs back, you talked about training, and I'm assuming you're talking about the person that's going to be reviewing this on your end. Can you explain who that person is? How is he going to be trained? Who's going to train him? And is his compensation in any way in coordination with how many tickets he gives?
Yes, so we have, the vote actually has two options. You could have the red light photo enforcement tickets reviewed by a current employee if you have the staff for that. If not, the statute allows you to hire a retired police officer. Our case, it would be part-time, no benefits, probably less than 15 to 20 hours a week. The other communities are, for example, River Forest, Westchester, their employee works anywhere between 10 and 20 hours a week, sometimes as little as 15, depending on how many violations they have. And their part-time salary is, in the community's paycheck, is paid out of their budget. Now, is it directly paid from the red light photo enforcement money? I can't answer that. But their fa, their salary is not tied into the amount of tickets they get. You, the village can choose to pay that employee out of the general fund, like you would if we hired a new police officer. And they're, you know, they're generally paid between somewhere like $18, the highest I found was $25. So and the reason the statute does that is they, it's supposed to be, so the automation is like the police officer is issuing the ticket, so when the batch comes to you, it's a, in this case, a retired police officer who has experience in making traffic stops and knows, you know, what violations are, and, you know, knows some compassion, and knows, there isn't a police officer here that, you know, hasn't stopped somebody and they were on the way to the hospital, or they they had some issue. So that that whole training is why the statute gave the ability to have another independent employee, still employee of the village, but part-time retired police officer. And it does not have to be a retired Riverside officer. The village can hire any retired police officer that falls within the, that jurisdiction, you know, statute.
Any other generalized questions? Ms. Borison, did you have anything that you wanted to ask?
I got, I got a couple that I got, Chief.
Scott, the second.
Thank you.
You're okay, okay.
I had a few people that emailed, they were interested if we could give a little bit more information on left turns when you're in the intersection. So you go in the intersection, and you're getting ready to turn left, and then it turns to yellow, the other traffic clears the intersection, and then you finish to clear the intersection.
The statute says if you're in that intersection, you're not to be cited. So if your car is in the intersection.
Yeah.
And, you know, somebody speeds up, so you got to wait a little bit, right? And then it goes from that yellow to red, that's not a violation because you're already in the intersection.
So if you're past the white line, the stop line, and you're in the intersection, you have the ability to clear the intersection?
You do.
If you are in the intersection. I think that's important, I think that's an important one that I had, two or three people commented about that.
So for those also, when you're when you're adjudicating that, when you look for it, it's the same as running a red light, did the light turn red before you got to the stop line?
Right.
Right? And then it's a violation, it's a violation whether you were turning left or not. But if you're in there, if you're past it while it's green, or yellow, yellow's an issue, but my own standard was as long as it's yellow when you cross the line, you know, you're good, it wouldn't be really fair to try to cite somebody. It's pretty clear.
And then I got one more for you, because somebody asked. So if, because the process is, camera takes a picture of you doing something, it goes to a batch, it ends up going to a Riverside police officer, retired or part-time to review, and then the company sends a ticket out, ticket notification. Can the person go online to see the video?
Yes.
Okay.
They they get, they have that video online, they say within 24 hours, but most of the time it's within 12 hours.
Yeah, I've done it. I just wanted to make sure our process was going to do that, so.
Okay.
Just, I want to reiterate something that we talked about last time. These camera surveillances are on 24/7. And they, and they have been used several times by this village to solve felony crimes that have happened in the village.
Correct, it streams 24 hours a day, and the crimes that we've solved, we've used other communities' cameras because we don't have them, but yes. So that drive-by shooting that we had last year, or was it the year before, on East Burlington, we got the car description from the Harlem and Cermak red light camera, which led us eventually to an arrest. And for those of you that might follow local news, you'll know that the River Forest Police Department solved a homicide with their red light cameras on Harlem and North Avenue. So yes, it it it's there, you can use it, you can use those cameras for criminal investigations because they're pointed in a public roadway.
How long are those streams stored?
Well, the violations are stored at least a minimum of 30 days.
No, I'm sorry, if we were...
If if a crime was committed, how much time do we have to access that stream before they're overwritten or...
Can be anywhere between 90 to 120 days.
That long?
Yes, they can be.
Oh, wow.
You know, companies differ for how long they do that, but it can be. So, for example, we've obtained video from the cameras off I-290, I think it's either Westchester or Bellwood, some two and a half months later.
Wow.
Where they fled two guys in harm.
I think that's, 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 that's a very important part of this. You know, I've heard people say that this is, you know, it's a, it's a money grab, I think that's probably the most common, it doesn't really do anything. You know, it's, I think it's, it's policing just more efficiently. I mean, there's no difference between rolling through a right turn as there is rolling through a stop sign in front of the village hall or in front of my house. We have more people that complain about that all the time. So it's, you know, it it does change habit. I have not stopped driving to Benny's and then going to Costco. So I take 22nd Street, I stop at the corner, and if it's red, I stop before the line, I look, I make sure it's safe, and I turn right. And I turn right on red, I have no problem, I've gotten one violation there about a year and a half ago, I have never gotten another one. So has it changed my habit? Yes, it's changed my habits. You know, we also nibble around the corners about, you know, revenue. You know, this does have a revenue aspect to it. No different than parking tickets. I mean, we, we, we issue parking tickets for people that do something wrong, and that's park over two hours, and that's revenue. This is the same, this is the same thing. So I, you know, I, 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 as long as it's administered fairly and honestly, which I believe 100% in the integrity of you and the police department, so long as that happens, I have no problem with this. And I think this would be a great tool for our village.
Did we agree last time on the revenue? If there was a surplus revenue, it would go to public safety initiatives, right? I mean, that's the way I remember it.
I think that was, that was two meetings ago.
Yeah, I think it's important to say, if that's the case, we need to make sure that within that, that we make sure that we continue to do that because we've kind of promised that. And I think there's a lot of people that...
And allocate the funds, is that possible?
I don't think that was ever done in a formal manner.
No, no, we were talking about it, and I know, Mike, you mentioned it, and it sounded like it is, some of the feedback I got from the emails, it seemed that that made people more comfortable that were previously not comfortable with it, if in fact it was going to go to have, say, buy signs that help slow traffic down in neighborhood streets, to help some of our intersections that we've deferred, where we want to get the curb cuts different so that the sidewalks go straight across instead of the angles. So again, I think if if there is a positive revenue to that, if it goes toward those initiatives that we want to get, where we've had to defer them, I think that, at least the people that have talked to me, they feel more comfortable with us moving forward with that.
I would have no problem putting the revenue towards public safety. And I would leave that to the, to the village manager and the administration to decide where that goes. But that could go to, you know, the installation of other exit and entrance cameras that we talked about.
Surveillance cameras.
I mean, you know, we live in a wonderful city, I mean, or wonderful village, we're very, very fortunate to live here. We're one of the 10 best, I mean, it is. But we happen to live, you know, 17 miles from, you know, a huge city that has a very dangerous reputation. And we've, we see it, we see it on our doorstep. I mean, just what, two weeks ago, those guys that ran that ATM, they were 100 yards from the entrance of our downtown. I mean, 100 yards from the people walking out of Choo Choo or in, by the, by the water tower. You know, thank God that that policeman saw them, and, and you know what, thank God they hit the tree. You know, it's, you know what, six months ago, you know, some guy ends up in Swan Pond with a nine millimeter with a 50-round caliber gizmo on it, and then you got the shooting on Burlington. Whatever we can do to increase public safety, we need to be able to do.
I want to mention that something President Sells just said, that I think it's just important to note, that it's cost neutral. You know, and I think you should know, that was negotiated by Attorney Morris. But he, that's one really positive thing. He negotiated that with, so that the village of Riverside would never lose money on this system. That was one of the red light changes that Attorney Morris was able to negotiate.
I would second that shout-out to you guys, because that changed my opinion a lot about the contractual language looked a little bit not in our favor. I think this is a very fair and reasonable way to do it.
It started out a little awkwardly because the company kind of sounded like they were going to take a hard line, but in the end, we got most of the critical things we thought the village should have.
So with that, let's, are there any more generalized comments first before we actually get to the nitty-gritty here? So let's move on now to the actual review of the contract. And we do have an email from Trustee Pollock that he asked to be read as part of this discussion. So, Manager Francis, would you do the honors?
Certainly. Thank you, President Sells and trustees.
Can I stop you just a second? Could we, could you get a copy of this for the trustees? I'm sorry, I should have thought of this before. You know, while Kathy's doing that, why don't we go ahead with our, with conversation that we might have, and then we'll go back to what trustee, because I want you to have this in front of you, because he's very specific in some of the questions that he has. So are there, are there other questions or concerns that you have that you would like to discuss with regard to the contract?
Well, I think the funding piece is interesting to me because if we could guarantee that, if we could get it into a separate fund to make sure that it never goes anywhere else other than the public safety, that would be something I would be interested in. I don't know if that's possible. I don't know how that works, but-
No, of course it is. The board just directs staff to use it for limited funds, and then staff will separate those funds. They can create a sub-
There's no, there's no need for additional separation, like a separate fund, like we have, like, the pension, like, things like that.
It could be pieces within, so it could be, not to get overly involved at this point in the game, but say you wanted to pay down some of the outstanding liability related to police pension to help with future tax levy implications. You could say at the end of a fiscal year, we want to make an additional contribution. And that would be basically a resolution, it would be board authorized, and we would make that transfer. We can separately segregate those amounts under our fund balance and really restrict them for it to be based on board action. And if it's a following fiscal year, you want to pay for capital for whether police or fire activities, the board would have the ability to do so. So-
And probably the best way to do it is not to try to hamstring staff, but to just require the monies to be separated out so you know what the amount is. And then in budget time, you know, you say, how much is in the fund? And you, based on a project-by-project basis, you can earmark them as part of that.
And that can be done just by a general consensus, in direction of the board?
Correct. Yeah, it could be-
And I think that I, I think I see everyone nodding in agreement that we would like to have that done? Is that correct? Okay.
Speaking on behalf of the people that emailed, I think that that's very helpful.
Okay. I just have a couple things that I don't think Trustee Pollock covered that I just want to point out. On section four point four of the agreement, it requires the village to be responsible for all pedestrian countdown signal heads, including but not limited LED upgrades and attendant costs and expenses, and this is an I.DOT requirement. What I had a question about was it says such upgrades, if any, will be handled by Mead Electric Company, and the cost may be financed over a twelve-month period. My first response to that is, if the village is paying for it, if it's a village responsibility, that we should have the ability to pick whatever contractor we want to do the work that we're paying for. But in speaking with Manager Francis, it turns out that Mead Electric Company is the person that we, or the company we use anyway with regard to this kind of work. But it just concerned me that we were being told what company we had to use when it's the taxpayer's money. So that, does anybody have any concerns about that remaining in the, okay. I think that was all, I think everything else that I have, Trustee Pollock has. So would you like to go through, Trustee Pollock?
Thank you, President Sells and trustees, for allowing me to provide my written comments regarding the draft contract with SafeSpeed LLC for automated traffic law enforcement. As I stated at the last board meeting, I believe that this technology is appropriate and may be beneficial for local governments, and in particular for Riverside. I see the primary benefit of video camera technology as being for post-incident investigation of criminal activity. The concurrent use of cameras for traffic enforcement may also provide a benefit if implemented carefully and with appropriate controls. I continue to believe that an RFP process may provide significant benefit to the village. I am concerned that we are accepting standard terms offered by one contractor without the benefit of a competitive bidding process. The fact that forty percent of all revenues will go to the vendor is but one term of the standard contract that should not, that should be negotiated in a competitive bidding process. Regarding the draft contract we received on Monday, I have the following questions and comments. Article three, paragraph three point one specifies that contractor will provide specified services at its sole expense. The other paragraphs do not include this language. Will the contractor provide the services specified in three point two through three point seven at no additional expense to the village? This should be clearly stated.
Okay, let me pause you there just a second. It might be more efficient if we just take these one at a time. So Attorney Molina, could you respond to that question?
Yes, so Trustee Pollock was, the problem with his question is that the services in three point two through three point seven are subject to the monthly fee, which is part of the appendix. So to say at no cost, at the sole cost to the contractor, isn't in the contract, there is a fee we pay every month, it's five hundred dollars, but we negotiated it so it's cost-neutral so that if ever the money collected is under that amount, it will go down to what the actual amount collected was. So they'll be cost-neutral, we'll never have to go out of pocket to pay this fee. It has to be at least the monies that we received or more. But what Trustee Pollock said, it's the way the contract's drafted, it's not, we do pay a fee. It's a monthly, monthly maintenance-type fee, it's five hundred dollars. So that's why it doesn't say at the sole cost.
Any questions about that?
Okay, next, please.
Article four, paragraph four point seven. Clarify in the contract what is meant by village will bear replacement costs for equipment which is damaged or destroyed by its own negligence. How could the village be negligent for equipment we do not maintain? What is potential cost liability to the village of this requirement?
Okay, so this, what, it refers to standard indemnification language in most contracts, where one party indemnifies the other if their own conduct causes damage, right? And what Trustee Pollock seems to be saying is, why are we indemnifying them since, how could our negligence possibly cause liability? Well, good example. A police officer negligently runs into, damages the equipment.
Or mowers.
Or, yeah.
Mowing equipment.
You know, or, or snow, or snow remove. I mean, there are things where it may be our fault and we should pay if we damaged it. Now, those won't happen much, but I don't think anybody would have a problem with that. I think Trustee Pollock just couldn't understand that that could happen, but that's the way it could happen.
And then we would turn it into our insurance.
Right.
And that doesn't mean you'd be in the contract. They'd have a claim regardless if it's in the contract or not. If we damaged their equipment, they would have a potential claim.
Right, but this is clear because it's contractual. So they don't have to sue us or make a claim. It's more like an insurance. But it makes sense, it's logical, but there aren't many instances when that would happen because they maintain it, so. Next, please.
Article six. Can we add that the signage shall meet or exceed the manual on uniform traffic control devices? We should consider doing more than the minimum regarding signs and other means of marking an intersection that includes cameras.
Okay, so signage already has to meet the uniform manual. All signage on roadways has to meet to that standard or it's not enforceable. So it will meet that standard, it doesn't need to be here. As far as exceed, I, that makes me a little uncomfortable, because if there's a standard that's dictated by a uniform manual, I don't know that you want to exceed it because exceeding may not be following. I think you follow, you know, you follow the uniform manual. We can ask that the language be put in. I suggest if we ask, we say that it shall meet the manual on uniform traffic control devices. I don't think it's necessary, but there's no harm in asking for it. The resolution, should you adopt it tonight, gives final authority for minor things to be worked out by the attorneys and by Jessica before she executes it. Anything major would have to bring it back to you because actually, the SafeSpeed also has to find, to give final approval, so.
But again, on that, we would just follow whatever the state mandates, right?
Yeah, it's actually a federal uniform.
Yeah.
Yes. And they would have to follow that anyway.
I think Doug's intent is a good one. He wants to make sure we give all the residents and visitors proper notice. Hey, this is one of the intersections that has a camera on it, change your habit.
Well, and there are all kinds of things that can be done outside of formal signage too, like the website, for example. Please remember the red light programs going into effect beginning of such and such. Those things are all there too.
You know, Western Springs has an actual red light enforcement page on their website. And there's a brochure that they put together. I'm sure we can copy that brochure, but it's a very good website. It tells you exactly where the cameras are, it tells you everything you need to know about them, why they're there, blah, 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 blah.
And to me, that's a, that's a better way to go about this, that's less risky.
You might want to take a look at Western Springs's website.
Next, please.
Article eleven. One of the justifications stated for foregoing the competitive bidding process was that the contract could be terminated without cause after one year. While article eleven alludes to termination without cause, termination without cause appears to be conditional. Specifically, the article is for four, I'm sorry, the contract is for four years, it should be, it should only be for one year with the option to renew. There is listed a fifty thousand dollar termination fee. This should be limited for the first year. After year one, the village should be allowed to terminate contract without cause and without any termination fee or other extraneous costs.
Okay, so for the, for the four years, this is something that they really are, don't want to give up. But the way the final language is negotiated, it's semantics, because you, because you can get out with the same kind of notice after a year, the same kind of notice you would have to renew. Because any contract to renew, the standard language is, the contract renews automatically for a one-year period unless you give the notice not to renew. Well, here, you do the notice, it would be to withdraw instead of renew. So it's, it's really, in my opinion, no different legally as far as what the legal rights the village has. And so it's, but they insisted that they want it for years. They want the communities, I think, going into it to be committed to it absent big changes. But the option to pull out is there.
And for us, it's more fiscally responsible because we don't have to renegotiate the contract every year. With my company, I do three-year terms, but I give an out of the first year. And, you know, it's, it works better that way for me and the client.
So, and then as far as the termination fee, I think Trustee Pollock just didn't find it, but there is, it says, he was thinking that the fifty thousand termination fee applies no matter when we withdraw, but the language, section eleven point seven specifically says the termination fee applies only if the agreement is terminated within three hundred sixty-five days of execution. So-
And that's eleven point seven.
Yeah.
It's pretty clear.
Yeah.
Yeah. And also, it's not necessarily fifty thousand. The fee is the lesser of fifty thousand dollars, or SafeSpeed's actual investment time and installation cost. There's no penalty for termination after that.
You know, I thought, I thought that part was clear. What I, what I, what I found, I kind of stumbled over when I was reading this though, is to be very clear that after that three hundred sixty-five days, that three hundred sixty-five days plus one, we have the right to withdraw from this at no cost. And I think what confused me is in eleven, in eleven nine, it says after the effective date. And the effective date is the date at which the first images are taken that could, that could result in violations, I think is how it's defined. Do we know that that's three hundred and sixty-five days? I guess I'm one-
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that's clarified. There is, there is a possible ambiguity there. We agree, we've got to buck that up.
You're saying the ambiguity between when we sign this agreement and when they accidentally install, we start taking pictures, it could be different times.
Well, they, they sort of will be, yeah. They will be something like that.
I guess what, I mean, it says, I would tie this into the part about the fifty thousand dollars, because it says if we, if we terminate without cause within three hundred sixty-five days, we pay the fifty thousand. It'd be nice if we could have some very clear, specific language that says after three hundred sixty-five days. We have, we have the right to terminate at no risk or cost to the village.
Three hundred and sixty-five days from the effective date.
Plus one.
Well, is that?
Well, you know, see, this is a-
See, I have a hard time in my mind reconciling eleven point seven and eleven point nine.
Right. And I don't know that that ambiguity necessarily harms the village in this sense, because, and I don't know that I want to get into it here, but in a certain sense, we know that the execution, that it's going to be three hundred sixty-five days before we would even, much more than that, before we even withdraw. It's going to be a year before the lights go in, before the cameras go on.
I'd be careful, though, for anyone on this board to assume that's a loophole that we're going to take advantage of, because that doesn't pass the spell test.
No.
Yeah.
Because it's possible that they'd say, well, it's possible that that would be terminated before there'd be any revenue, and that clearly is not the intent of it, so. I actually prefer not having the ambiguity.
Yeah, we can clear it up. I mean, we noticed a tension between the two provisions. But, but the intention, I think, of SafeSpeed, I think we know what they mean. They just put some inartful language here in the one provision.
So how do you, how do you want to leave that then? You just want our attorneys to work that out?
Yeah, I just, I don't want that to be considered a major decision, I guess is maybe the point I'm getting at. I think we kind of all give them direction on that.
Would you like to finish up?
Sure. In regards to all their issues outside of the contract, is my understanding that state law requires that each camera installation be reviewed annually to determine if it is providing a safety benefit, and that if no safety benefit can be determined, the camera must be removed. I recommend that the village commit to hiring a third party to conduct such reviews. The third party should be a qualified traffic engineer or have similar credentials.
Let me pause you there just a second. I had, I had similar questions. This requirement for the annual, it's a one-year and then every three-year. I did ask Chief Weitzel to look into that. He provided information about that to the trustees today. But Chief Weitzel, could you just briefly summarize that for the residents?
Yes, they, so they do, SafeSpeed does their own study at the end of the year. They, their current engineering company is Burke Engineering. And you can request I.DOT, if the village wanted I.DOT to do an independent review, we could request that. We could also hire, if you didn't want to hire Burke, because Burke is also the engineer for SafeSpeed, you could go out and hire a separate, our traffic engineer, for example, KLOA, they're qualified, they could come in and do that data. Sometimes it lags a little bit longer than a year. The only reason I would say that is because they also rely on the crash data. So I, they have to wait till I.DOT releases that crash data. So if the camera went in, you know, January first, 2019, I.DOT's not going to have that data January first, 2020. There's usually three to four months lagging, but they start the other data collection, which is what they've done from the videos and the other, their own in-house data. But we, to get a full picture, the full report won't come until I.DOT says there were seven crashes at that intersection, and the year before, there were twelve. So some of that is dependent on when I.DOT gets it. But you can do those reviews, and in fact, they do do those reviews.
What, can, can you flesh out a little bit about what is it that's being analyzed? I mean, what is the, what are they trying to determine? I say, I think Trustee Pollock in his letter says that his understanding that is, as a result of this analysis, it's determined that no safety benefit- as a result of this analysis, it's determined that no safety benefit, benefit be determined, the camera must be removed. I don't believe that is accurate. I believe what, what the IDOT's memorandum says, that if, if IDOT determines that somehow the cam, cameras are detrimental to safety, that IDOT could instruct that they be removed.
They can. IDOT is the final authority on all this. If, if they find that, that, that cameras are actually, like you said, detrimental, they can, they can tell us to remove them. Um, I don't know that that happens too often, but it, it certainly was, is in the provisions. But they're going to, the data they're going to examine is everything they've collected for that year is, at that intersection, meaning Safe Speed through their data. It's all has to be housed and kept. So, that might be how many total cars went through there, how many total violations, how many, they'll get our data, how many did, tickets did we actually issue? What, what our revenue stream was. They'll, they'll ask us for that. Roadway improvements we may have made on our own. IDOT's roadway improvements during that time, lighting improvement during that time, uh, traffic volumes studies during that time. So, and then they'll go to IDOT and get IDOT's information from that intersection. That's the only part that lags behind is IDOT's.
And so, my, my understanding is that, that, that is required by statute after the first year and then every, every three years thereafter.
But the village can't, you, we could do our own, I mean, we, you're not prevented, so they wouldn't keep that data. If you wanted to do it every year at our own expense, we could get our own traffic engineer to do a study every year. But, but by statute, it's the first year and then every three years.
Okay. Next.
What control mechanisms will be put in place to continuously monitor the efficacy of the equipment and the ticketing process?
I'm not sure I really understand any, but I want to take a shot at that. Mr. Malina, our chief?
You did visit the, the equipment.
Yeah, I mean, I think the equipment, I, I, they have to maintain the equipment under the agreement, but obviously, if the images are blurry or you can't tell, they would know there's a problem. I think the, the process that we've talked about, and that is that it's not the cameras, the tickets, the violations aren't automatically spit out by the camera. It's the review by a police officer or retired police officer that reviews the video and makes the determination reviewing the video as if he or she were seeing it live. And so, they follow that process and that's, those tickets are issued under the same process and with the same training as every officer, uh, you know, in, in the department, or if it's a retired officer from the department that that officer came from. So, that's the ticketing process. I would say that's how you, how it's going to be monitored. Is that fair, chief?
That's, that's actually correct, and they're also required by statute, just so you know on that same, they're, all red light photo enforcement companies are required by statute to report to IDOT every single maintenance issue, every report of, of, of damage. If they have to go out and shut that system down for two hours to clean the window, it must be reported so that at the end of the year, you can also get a report on all data on the maintenance of that particular camera head and unit. That's required by statute.
Thank you. And the last one.
In consideration of the non-competitive award of this contract, the contract should include at-cost installation of surveillance cameras by Safe Speed at other locations. In conclusion, I'm requesting.
Hold on just a second.
I'm not sure that that's.
I'm not following that.
Yeah, it's, I mean, the, the, the cost spread is all spelled out pretty clearly in the contract, who pays for what and what our fee is.
I just think what Doug is asking is if we wanted to have a 24-hour surveillance camera, and I don't, I don't know if this is what Doug is asking, but I'm, I'm only thinking this may be what he's asking. If we wanted to have a 24-hour surveillance camera put at the corner of Burlington and Harlem, that may not be.
As an extra perk for not.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's not reasonable, though.
Would, yeah. Would they put it in at cost?
But, but that's not reasonable.
I, I agree to that.
Do, well, did they do that?
No, I mean, it's not part of what they do.
And it's not the right camera.
No, it's not.
But if they do, I, I, no, it's illegitimate. If they have a subsidiary or a business that does that surveillance, it's worth asking the question.
Yeah.
So, I'll, I'll read the last one because this implicates board action. Trustee Pollak says, "In conclusion, I am requesting that the board consider these questions as well as questions from the other trustees. At the conclusion of the discussion, I would ask that the contract be tabled for further consideration at the next meeting. I would like to have the opportunity to follow up on these questions and comments prior to the final approval of the contract." So, having heard Trustee Pollak's request, would anyone like to move to table? Hearing none, we'll move on. Um, are there any other questions or concerns prior to vote? Hearing none, please call the law.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsen.
Aye.
Trustee Galleri.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
No.
Motion carries. Next up is the consideration on, by the way, Chief Weitzel and Attorney Malina Mars, thank you very much for the time and effort that you put in to this and, and the fine work that you, you've been getting, some important concessions for the village. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Yeah, Michael did a terrific job.
Uh, next up is a continuing discussion of the 2019 budget. Director Johns.
Good evening. Staff started the budget process in August with the presentation of the 10-year capital improvement plan and continued into September with the five-year financial forecast. This plan has been revised through input from the board, village manager, and department heads. The total village revenues presented in this 2019 budget are $18,375,301 and expenditures at $19,358,78. I'm happy to present to you a budget with a balanced general fund budget before transfers. I wanted to highlight a couple items in this budget for you. We saw another sizable increase in police pension obligation of $54,107 or 4.08%. While this is sizable, this was a decrease from the required increase last year of 9.9%. There are, is a newly added special events area in the general fund, found on page 135 of the board packet. Newly added funds in this, in this budget are the Harlem Business District Fund and Special Recreation Fund. Based upon feedback at the financial forecast presentation, staff presented a preliminary list of potential fee increases on page 93 of your packet. These potential additional revenues are not included in the 2018, 2019 budget. Are there any questions with these fees?
Can we go back to 93?
Sorry, yes.
135.
Yeah, I'm just getting a bit.
Yeah, just give us a second.
I think these are the fees she was saying to us.
Can you explain that compliance fees? And are these just three different options of like if we increase from one to one? Can you explain that? What, what, what is encompassing compliance fees?
May I, Director, have to speak to that?
Uh, compliance fees are the property transfer sale fees that we do. So, we do what we call a certificate of compliance that we issue with the sale of any property. And currently, the fee for a single-family home is $200. So, currently, that is the fee we're collecting. It's $500 for any commercial property. Obviously, that's not the majority of the properties that we have in town. So, what we have before you is we could increase it to 250, and then we have there the additional revenue that we believe that would bring in. Another option is to increase it to 325. That is actually a little bit more comparable to some other communities. Uh, there's two other communities that charge more than what we do for the compliances. Uh, North Riverside and Forest Park both charge more than $200 for their single-family home compliance fees. And then the other option is to go on the really high end, and that would be increased to $750 for the compliance fee.
That's just per sale? There's no, it's not based on like the, the home price or anything?
Just a flat fee, correct. Some other communities do, um, uh, sales tax.
Transfer.
Transfer. And so, those are typically a percentage of whatever the sale price is. Ours is just a flat.
That's home rule.
Home rule, or I've also been told that no longer are non-home rule communities permitted to do it, but there was a period of time when non-home rule communities had the ability to institute the transfer tax. That is no longer an option available, even if we were to do a referendum, we could not.
So, is it, oh, sorry. So, I'm sorry, on that same thought, though, if, if, if we, that, so that's like $1 per thousand, that, that would essentially qualify as a tax, which we would not be able to do. So, we, we can't do it proportionally. It's got to be flat fees.
It's got to be a flat thing.
I, I would say there's also a benefit to our, our compliance, actually. Um, when I first started in Riverside, there were a lot of closings that were happening, um, where property owners weren't, where it was a bank foreclosure or other types of things that were happening, uh, where they weren't getting the zoning compliance. And with the zoning compliance, you're making sure you have an updated plan of survey. If there are issues where the property isn't in compliance, at least that person that's becoming the new resident of Riverside is made aware of those issues. And so, we note those with regard to impervious service and other things.
That's where they, they're legal and non-compliant.
What was that?
That's where they tell you whether you have a property that's legal or not compliant, right?
Yes.
So. Which, by the way, I think we had testimony that 95% of the homes are not completely non-conforming. Yeah, as you put that way without proper knowledge, December 6th, so.
That, that is not true, Mr. Lumsen.
I beg to differ, sir.
I understand.
You don't say so in the factual, which is under research.
Which is what you just did, which you just made a factual statement.
There's a consideration that it wasn't done per federal law. So, we have to go back and look at that, and we've asked for that to be on the agenda. I think there's a lot of discussions that need to go there. Again, I'm not a huge fan of increasing the fees, at least the folks that have talked to me. What, what is the, what do you mean by when you say increase vehicle sticker enforcement? Does that mean we're increasing the price of the sticker, or are we going to start enforcing those in the village that don't have a sticker?
Currently, the process is, um, if you buy your sticker on time, it's $90. Each additional month, it's additional $10. In about October of each year, um, the police department in conjunction with the finance department issues a ticket for $130, which is the price of that original ticket plus the late fees. This idea would be to do the $130 plus a $50 parking ticket.
Do we still get registration from the state and compare it to the, the vehicles in town?
We do it, um, not every year. We have requested that list for this year and, um, are hoping to compare it as soon as we can get that list.
I, I, I agree with Trustee Lumsen. I'm not, I'm not, um, not big on raising fees. It seems like we look at all these different communities and we try to find one that, well, three or four of these things, you know, if we, if we look at all our fees, all our fees are beginning to be the highest of all of the communities.
You're talking the average.
Yeah. Um, you know, I think we need to, I think in some ways, we need to be more thoughtful of our fees. Um, you know, I, um, you know, I, 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 again, I'll speak again about motorcycles and, um, and cars and antique vehicles. I think those are very easy to track. The state of Illinois tracks those. I think those are very easy to track, and that's easy to do. They only use the, the, the streets half the year. And yes, I do own a vehicle that's a motorcycle, so I, just so everyone knows that, but I'm not doing this because I own it. I'm doing this because I've had several friends that have motorcycles that complain about that. Um, but it will benefit me, and if we do it, I won't vote on it. Um, the other thing is, as I've heard people say about, you know, uh, and I don't know how to, to, to do this, but, you know, we, we have historical homes in town, and we ask them to keep their houses, or we make them keep their houses to a, to a particular degree. So, that may be having to, you know, replace a cedar shake or a shingle roof or a slate roof or whatever with the same proper materials, where they could have gone to asphalt. And if they went to asphalt, it even could be at a part of the house that nobody sees. But if they go to asphalt, they would be able to not only do the project, project for less, but their permit fees would be less. So, they're paying 1.75 on a higher product as, as, as well as paying for the higher product. I think we're, we're penalizing people to do better stuff. I would rather see a flat, and I think we have a minimum when it comes to roofing, which is, uh, $100 or something like that. Um, I would rather see that as a flat fee. Same thing with driveways, things that we want to promote, you know, that we want, I want to be fair. You know, if somebody has a gravel driveway or, or a black, or blacktop driveway and they want to put a paver driveway in, not only are they paying for the more expensive paver driveway, then they're paying the percentage on top of it. So, we're, 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 and it's not a lot of money, but we're, 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 we're just unfairly targeting people to do better stuff. And I, I don't know if that's, that's even possible, but that's my thought on fees. I, I think we need to try to be fair with our fees. And, and I think people also need to know that, you know, this budget, as well as it's balanced, is 300 and some odd thousand dollars short when it comes to capital that we've already decided on, which means one of those things is the security cameras, um, and some other stuff. So, I mean, I, people need to know that this isn't, you know, a, a great budget. And it go, and it gets, as we move forward in years, next year, it's 667,000 in the, in the red. The year after, it's 913. And in 2022, it's over a million dollars. Um, and, and we don't have the power to raise taxes in order to find this. We either have to get it through fees or other revenue streams. Um, so I think we need to start thinking of that and, um, uh, make sure people understand, you know, their, where their taxpayer, tax dollars go. Again, I was on the Western Springs, um, website today, and, um, I mean, they had, and I thought it was really, they had, they had a, a budget, but they had a, like a, almost like it was, it was, it had a picture of a house, and it had a person's standard holding their tax bill and saying $10,000. And then it's like, where did it go? So, they had an arrow to the village, and the village said 14%. And then an arrow to the schools, it's 69%. Arrow to the township, certain, certain percent. Arrow to Cook County, and an arrow to, so it showed everybody very simply where their money goes. Because your $10,000 doesn't come to this table. $1,400 comes to this table. So, I think we need to be, we need to be very transparent to make sure people know where their, their, their money, where their tax dollars is going and what we're, you know, what we're doing. And I think you guys have done a great job. Um, but with that, there are some things in here that, you know, those, those fees that you were talking about, special events, you know, we're talking about RAW, we're talking about, um, Hop Stop, we're talking about the car shows. These things, you know, we, we're talking about, we want to bill them for the installation of fences. Um, you know, and I, 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 I hate to do that kind of stuff because I think some of these events, and I, all of those are, are quality of life events. I, I enjoy going to them. I mean, I, I remember leaving Hop Stop and watching a swarm of people going over the railroad tracks. And they were three-deep at 34 East, they were, they were wall-to-wall at Molly's, they were outside of La Barra, they were at Choo Choo, they were at all our restaurants. The economic driver of, you know, these different events, um, the car shows, bringing all these people in, they, they don't even know what we have in town until they come. So, I, I think we need to try to, to work with these events and make sure we can keep these things going. And, and I think we, we should, as a community, have an investment in them. So, I would, I would like us to see, to continue to sponsor those as a community. Um, I know that could be difficult, but I think it's, it's important.
So, I like maybe, I'm not on this, but, but I think that you do need to evaluate fees annually, and to me, some of these seem very low. And, and I think that one of the things that happens is people, people become, things become stale. I think, you know, I mean, I'm looking, I have three dogs, and I'm looking at this, I'm like, I'm only paying $750 a dog? That's crazy. Um, I, I, I just think that, I don't think you can go up 300% for compliance fees, but I think that it's reasonable to go up to 250 or 325 in order to support the staff because the staff does a great job.
I think that's, we, we talk about the fees that we get for some of those other things. We talk about the fees covering what our costs are. So, are these increases because our costs have gone up, or are these just increases because we can't balance a budget?
I think that's exactly, yes.
So, if it's the latter, we need to figure out what we get rid of. Not just, not just current long, increased fees to pay for a fact that we overspent on legal fees, or we overspent on over-budget.
we overspent on over-budget projects, or we overspent on what? So we need to look into figure out where we busted in our budget. We know one's the pension program, right? I mean, that's the big one, right?
It's the big driver of expense.
You guys deserve it, but we gotta figure out how to cover it, right? And and I'm not so sure just spreading it out on on a compliance fee at twenty-five bucks is gonna get us where we need to be. I think we need to be more frugal and understand with the residents what's important to them and spend the money on what's important to them, and quit spending all the money on stuff that's not important to them.
Well, so, for example, the compliance process is a little bit more involved than, I think, most realize.
Yeah.
So usually, it's coordinating meetings with the realtors, going onsite, coordinating the water and sewer department to go onsite, read the meter, onsite inspection by our building inspector, getting the plan of survey. And sometimes we even have to fast-track some of these, because some realtors, either it's fast-tracking a closing that they weren't necessarily anticipating, or someone thought someone else was doing it.
So like, that one feels low to me, for what we spend, right? So I'm, I wanna just try and get them accurate.
Right.
So that if I'm going in and I'm paying for a compliance fee, I understand that I'm paying for the service that I'm getting, and not paying for something that's to offset some other cost.
So, sorry.
That's right.
So it's not just the the inspector that's going out. It's Director App's also well-done it. I have to sign off on it and review it. The community development analyst does a lot of coordinating of scheduling and all that. So I, it it's more involved than I think maybe some realize.
I suggest let's do this in an orderly way. Let's just go down, let's just go down this list here, because staff needs direction from us whether, what we want to do on these fees. So, the pet license fee, do you agree with staff's recommendation, or do you have something else in mind?
I agree.
I agree.
The parking enforcement fines?
I agree.
I agree.
I'm just gonna assume people agree unless I hear differently. On the, on the compliance fees, what do you wanna do on that one?
My comment is, if it costs us two hundred and fifty dollars to do a compliance fee, that's what it should be. If it's three hundred and twenty-five dollars, that's what it should be. I think we need to cover our expenses.
I don't think you're gonna predict that, though.
Can we, can we quantify, can we quantify what the compliance fee process costs the village?
In twenty fifteen, I looked at the process and tried to come up with a fee for it. At the time, we were charging one seventy-five, and I wanted to make sure that we were covering our costs. At that time, I determined that we were not, and so we did increase the cost to two hundred dollars. That was in twenty fifteen. Obviously, staff costs, et cetera, have gone up since then. So there is reason to believe that two hundred dollars currently, you know, in some instances, may or may not be covering our time for the cost of the inspection. So I would say it would be appropriate to increase it, whether it's to two fifty or three twenty-five. I think three twenty-five could be something that lasts us longer and covers costs as salaries, et cetera, continue to increase. Two hundred and fifty is still reasonable, and would definitely cover our costs currently this year, next year.
Thoughts?
And these are, these are fees for when people sell their home and are moving out, either moving into the village or moving out?
Correct.
I'm fine with three twenty-five.
What's the difference between a compliance fee and a compliance fee exempt?
Currently, if you are putting your house into, like, say, a trust, or if you, say, are going through divorce, and you have to take a spouse's name off of a deed or things like that, we have to stamp the deed, because we currently have a rule over at the Cook County Recorder's of Deeds to make sure that people are doing their compliances, that it has to be stamped by the village. So when somebody comes in and says, I have an exempt transaction, I need my deed stamped, we currently do that for free. And so that requires us asking a few questions, making sure that it meets the parameters, having them come in, stamp the deed, and then mail it back to them, or if they come to the counter. So this would add an administrative fee to kind of cover our minimal administrative costs for that.
I don't think anybody's gonna, going to complain about us covering our cost where we spend it. And I think that's where my head's at.
So I heard three twenty-five from Trustee Sedby.
Was the last time, was twenty fifteen the last time we reevaluated all of our fees?
For the building, for the building department, yes.
Because I don't think we wanna be doing this every year. So I would agree that doing something a little bit, you know, more predictable, what could be predicted to be our costs in three to five years, I'm fine with covering that. If that's three twenty-five, then yeah.
Three twenty-five? Okay, three twenty-five it is. Compliance fee exempt, agreement on that, I take it. Building fee increased from one point seven five to two percent?
I disagree.
I'm not a big fan of doing that.
Yeah, I disagree with that one, too.
Again, because from from your, what you said, Joe, I think it's important that we try and incentivize people to invest in their homes in town.
So I, do I hear consensus that once, one point seven five remains?
Yes.
Okay. Base inspection fee increased from seventy-five to one hundred. Reinspection fee increased from seventy-five to one hundred. A new fire inspection fee.
But could I, like, explain the reinspection? I I agree with the base inspection fee, but what what's a reinspection fee entail?
If you fail your inspection, or you don't show up for your inspection, we do charge you for us to come back out and re-inspect what you do.
Which is very fair, because otherwise they don't show up.
And yeah, just visiting is a hundred dollars, really, a cost allocation.
To me, I would keep the base fee down, but I, the reinspection fee, I'd go up, because it's just a pain, pain in the butt factor, right?
Part of it.
Because it's rude when you set something up and you don't show up.
I would agree, I would agree with that. Keep the base fee standard and and the reinspection fee one twenty, one twenty-five. So you pick up that that twenty-five you're given for the, for the base fee, and and the, and you know, if you don't show up for your reinspection fee, and you don't have a good reason.
And then you're incentivized to do it right the first time, and not try to skirt by something.
Right. And it's, it's, and it's also rude. People are taking the time of their day.
What is, what is, what is the rationale for increasing the base inspection fee from seventy-five to one hundred?
Some of our contract inspectors' fees have started to go up, and so I feel increasing it would kind of help cover some of those costs going forward.
When is the last time you've increased it?
Oh, we increased it in twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen, so it's been.
Before it was fifty dollars.
Again, I just think our costs are going up three to four percent a year. And I can't believe that there's, there's not much this village can do for less than a hundred dollars.
Nope.
I mean, you're not talking just the inspector, you're talking about staff and scheduling, and so that's why I'm okay with the base inspection fee. With the reinspection, I just get concerned that we're gonna, if we go too high, we incent SCOT laws on that, and I don't wanna go too far either. So I.
It's a fair point.
So, and both stay at one hundred? Yes? Okay. What is the, what is the proposed new fire inspection fee? Speak to that.
I can speak to that one. So we do, and Chief Buckley can chime in. We do fire inspections currently, annually, semi-annually?
We do them manually, and currently, we're doing one hundred and sixty-one of all the businesses and multifamily dwellings in the village, looking for any fire code violations, as well as testing their fire alarm systems, making sure that they're operating and performing properly.
Currently, we don't charge for that?
No.
Correct.
Yeah. So so I would say that if we're gonna charge a hundred dollars for the base inspection or reinspection, it should be a hundred dollars for fire inspection. I don't know if you would, if the trustees go about that.
You said once a year or twice a year?
Annually, once a year.
And and if you have, I mean, I'm, I'm almost thinking that this should be tied into the the amount of units that you have in the building, because if you had a multi-unit building, isn't the inspection time much, doesn't take a lot longer to make sure it works?
We don't actually go on every unit of the building. We just do the common areas.
But does, still, if you had to go to a, a six-flat or a, or a, or something that has thirty units, isn't that, isn't that more time-consuming than if you just had a, the three-flat?
What about square foot?
Well, they have, they have, one of these things had it by, by size of the building.
For one-headed?
Yeah, I would, I would look at something like that.
Who's paying the fee, the building owner? I guess, who would be paying the fee?
The building owner.
No, they'll pass it along to the contractor.
Well, yeah, no, I understand. That's why I'm trying to figure it out.
But if a renter is giving you something out of their unit inspection.
Absolutely.
Right?
You know what, I I saw, maybe it was, it's.
I think we're confusing about the transfer.
It was on something else where they, it was, yes, exactly, it was the transfer fees, but I thought it made sense, because it had here multifamily, one to two units would be one hundred dollars, twelve units plus would be two hundred dollars, you know, but it was a transfer fee. But I think we can use that same thought process to to this inspection fee, where you do, you know, three to five units or whatever. I don't know how, how do units work, but three to five, five to ten, fifteen and above. And because it's based on our, I mean, if we're trying to catch our costs, a bigger building takes longer time.
Is there any order about how to handle this inspection fee? Is it, is it a flat fee, or is it along the way?
Yeah. Did all barriers by the municipality?
Do you want, you want staff to take a look at that?
I would, I would think that would be something we wanna take a look at.
Yes, have them take a look at, okay.
But you, you don't need them to come back to us? You're okay delegating them?
Yeah, okay.
All of these?
Will come back. This is only.
It'll be in the budget, it'll be in the budget anyway, so. What is the, what is the proposed new parkway inspection fee?
Currently, we charge a deposit for parkway inspections, but if the parkway is returned to good form, we return a hundred percent of it, so there is no inspection fee. However, Director Bailey or Superintendent Carrasco need to go out, take pictures before the project is started and afterwards. So it's not a fee we currently charge.
It's like if somebody grabs a construction rig over the parkway and tears up the grass and stuff, and the sidewalk, and then you guys gotta go out and hammer them to fix it.
Yep. You wanna add something?
So, we do collect a parkway deposit, so that if they want that money back, they do have to repair it. Obviously, that does require an inspection to make sure that everything has been properly restored before we will return the deposit money. If it's not properly restored, then we will draw down on that deposit to do the repairs ourself. So, but currently, if everything is repaired, we return the money. However, we've not necessarily recouped our costs for the administration of that parkway deposit and the inspections that have happened. So this would be to start to charge for those inspections, since there are two inspections, plus quite a bit of administrative work that goes into tracking the parkway deposits.
So again, that's gonna give them incentive to not have to come out there three times to inspect it, until they do it right the first time, get everything planted right. So you don't have to come back once, and plus them seventy-five or fifty bucks.
Which, which figure, the fifty or seventy-five is for keeping what that costs?
Probably seventy-five.
What's it cost to put in a new parkway? I, this, this to me sounds like a nitpicky.
That's just for Director Bailey.
Just for them to go out there.
To go out and document.
But we go out, I mean, if you're going out there for a new build, or a guy's, you know, this is gonna be a new build. You're gonna have an inspector out there at the beginning to just get stuff ready, and then you're gonna have, you know, one of our inspectors is gonna go out there somewhere along the line. They can always look at the parkway. This, to me, looks like.
It's, public works handles right away. Inspector Rivera handles the structure and the private property item.
So, seventy-five?
Yeah, seventy-five.
Okay.
Zeroed.
So now let's.
I guess I was.
So, but let's turn, let's turn now to to page one thirty-five and address the issue that Trustee Ballerine raised about the special event charges. I think that's worthy of a discussion.
While we're turning there, I do wanna echo everyone else's thoughts that raising these fees is nickel and diming. It's frustrating, but it's reality. We have very limited sources of revenue, and these, we're trying to approximate village costs for that. And the rest of the community couldn't, should not be subsidizing users of village time and energy. So that's really all we're trying to accomplish here, as distasteful and nitpicky as it sounds.
Well said. Thank you for saying that. So, special events. The concept here is the village trying to recoup its, I guess, right? Is that, that's what you directed?
Yes.
Yeah. What, do you want, you wanna explain the rationale, or Director Johns, whoever you want?
I'm happy to. This came into effect because the question has been asked of me several times, how much is the village paying for this event? So I tried to put it all into one area to be able to quantify that cost for police time, public works time, parks and recreation time. All of these events are still in the budget for next fiscal year.
But what are, what are we looking here, at here on on page one thirty-five? Or this, this, this is the cost to the village of putting on these events?
So the personnel services are the personnel services, staff time for that event, and then I separate it out contractually. Some of those are offset by, on the top of the page, sponsorships, program fees, and the part that the recreation fund is currently encapsulating.
But what, but what we're proposing to do going forward, though, is, is charge these, charge the people that are putting on these events, the cost of village services connected with those events. Is that correct?
Currently, currently in the special event application that goes before the board, there is a page that details out the estimated costs that we should be billing them, is the way the special event form is currently put together. However, for a lot of the community events, they have not been charged that form. So I think staff is looking for a little bit of direction if those fees want to be waived, in what instances that we charge them.
So that's, that's the question.
Well, I, but I still don't understand, what is the revenue? The revenue is how we're doing it now. This is not a, even though it's in the two thousand nineteen budget, this is reflecting how we're doing it currently, right?
Correct.
Okay, so this is proposing no new taxes, fees, charges for special events?
I'm sorry, it, in, in the reimbursements, which I realize is zero on here, but on the revenue, because we did include charging for special events that are not put on by the village in next fiscal year.
What special events are those?
Those are RAW, Hop Stop, River Fest, the water slide event from the swim club, the RSC spring fundraisers, and the car show are the ones I had detailed costs on.
And where is that fee piece, or the revenue piece?
That revenue goes into.
Now, do we have a page with that?
Yeah. How much, how much revenue are we talking about?
Yeah.
It would be the cost of the expenses.
Okay.
So I do not have that detailed out by event.
The personnel and the contractual. So I guess if we look at Hop Stop as an example, is that, I don't even, is that six eighty-five, and there's not another one. So you're saying that they should pay six eighty-five?
Correct.
Whereas RAW should be paying seven thousand dollars?
Because it's more labor, right, for those two events, you had to put the feds up. That's where the big, that's where the big dollar hours is, to put the feds up. And and then the, so like, the contractual services would be the porta-potties, right? That would be kind of that kind of stuff, right?
Correct.
So, in this, if I'm reading this right, we receive from sponsorships, program fees, and recreational transfer, seventy-four thousand for these events are proposed, and they're gonna cost us ninety-five. So it's twenty thousand bucks.
So currently, the general fund has been offsetting that.
Plus the recreation transfer.
The recreation transfer is included in that seventy-four thousand.
So essentially, we've been covering a third of our costs.
Mm-hmm.
I'm kind of okay with that.
I'm kind of okay with that, because it's benefit of quality of life.
That's fine.
I, I would like to, Ron, could you, would you, I'm, I'm just, the, looking at some of the things that you do, you know, I'm, I'm looking at like, the Riverside ride at a thousand forty-two. Do we get a thousand four, a thousand dollars worth of benefits out of that? I mean, do we have, is it well, is it well-attended?
It has been in years. That's one that fluctuates. I think a lot of the events where you see the smaller dollar amount, dollar amounts correlates to the crowd that's, that's showing up. The fishing derby, which is a new event, we limit to fifty people just for space to fish. But I think it's highly beneficial to show off the riverfront and promote the fishing and access to the river. So I do think that we can't really gauge, you know, there's a definite benefit to the community. I've always kind of viewed the Parks and Recreation Department and the events that we put on as kind of the PR of the village. The, the events we put on are the, the things that are gonna help build that sense of community. So I, in that sense, it would be hard to determine the value, even though there is one. But I think some of the bigger events, I think when we're, to me, this page is, is just is as much about the dollar amounts as it is educating the board and the public as to what it takes to pull off these events. If you look at the third and fourth of July, which is the cornerstone event here in Riverside, we're talking about fifty thousand dollars in costs just to, to pull that off. So, I do think some of the smaller events have less impact. The events that. The events that impact just our department are certainly not as much of a consideration, I think, but even something like the touch a truck event we just had, we have fire personnel, police personnel, public works personnel there, you know, to man the vehicles and, and kind of explain what they do, so there's a cost associated with that. Something that is a department event is, is not that much of a concern to me, that's something we're already doing.
But I, I think the relevant question though is the one that you raised, Trustee Ballerine, the, I mean, obviously, we're not gonna charge Parks and Rec for village services because it's all coming out of the same thing. The question though, are, are the events like Raw, Hop Stop, Riverfest, Water Slide, fundraiser, car show, are we gonna, are, are we going to charge the, the organizations that put those, that put those events on, are we gonna charge them these fees? Are we gonna pass these fees along to them?
For, for, we do, we do a special, I mean, like if they're...
We, we haven't been doing it on a consistent, we haven't been doing it on a consistent manner. So that, and that's the question.
If they're having like weddings and things, where they've had a number on there, right?
That's different. That's close to the public for these more...
So private events were recouping our costs?
Correct.
And then some might up a little bit.
So the question...
But that's not entirely, because some, we're mixing private and public events in here too. I don't want to be specific here, but in my mind, if you have to pay $50 to get into something and it's exclusive, then you should be paying the village something. If it's party in the park, or...
Like the car show.
Car show, where it's open, no fee, then I will pay subsidizing that, so this, this...
Well, that's, that's, but that's the question staff needs you to answer. Which, which ones of these make that determination?
Anything that's, I think anything that's, charges a fee and is a private event should pay some sort of reimbursement to the village.
Well, let's take Raw for an example. How, how would you, what determination would you make for Raw?
I think that's open to the public, that's a public benefit, doesn't cost anything, so I'm fine subsidizing that. I don't, I think it'd be hard to go to the Raw.
So my, Hop Stop would be one where we had to buy a ticket.
Yeah, that's, I, that's what I'm specifically saying. I think Hop Stop should be reimbursing some portion of the village's time, but I can't see going to Raw organizers and saying, "We need another $7,000 from you."
I think they should be paying some sort of a fee though. I mean, they're not paying any fee right now.
I think that's, we need to...
And with Hop Stop, if they're, if they're charging a fee for people to enter, they should be paying the fee, we should be getting reimbursed for our fees.
How's the, how's the farmer's market?
Farmer's market's a part of us.
It's the village. I know, but it's not on yet.
Because they, they pay for their costs through booth fees.
As does Raw. There is, there is a fee, the artists pay a fee to Raw, so their, Raw is collecting some revenue, they're also paying a, an event coordinator that doesn't handle the village logistics, we do that. Farmer's market would be similar in the respect where there is a booth fee for the farmers.
So, so Raw's getting a fee for, from the artists, keeping the, keeping the fee, and we're providing them our services at no cost?
Right now, yes.
Whereas the, the farmer's market grew out of a group of volunteers who then came to us and said, "We want this to continue to move forward, we just don't have the volunteers anymore." Parks and Rec and village staff worked with them. We basically take the fees that are collected to offset our costs, so we track it on a month-to-month basis.
Which is very fair, and it's a great one, people afford to it, right?
So we're kind of, I'm sorry.
Do they pay rental fees for these locations like Riverfest, right? You know, you, you pay a dollar to get in, are we charging them for that space? No.
I guess that's where I draw the line. If it's an organization that's collecting money from residents to attend, if you don't pay, you don't get in, they should be paying a fee.
Right, but with Raw, they're charging the artists to be there, so is that, that's one of the same.
I don't, they're not charging the resident, it's open to the residents, there's no fee for the residents, and I don't think Raw is, is, they're not turning a profit, I can't believe.
Or no.
Maybe they charge them. Yeah, that's, I mean, if you said they had to charge $7,000, we're gonna charge them, what, $7,000?
That would probably kill Raw.
You wouldn't have Raw.
Yeah.
I mean, it's an expensive event, two days, security, sort of like...
They, they pay for the security, so this is...
I understand, but it's, they have a lot of expenses. And I think it's, again, I agree with you.
I, I think that there should be maybe two tiers of fees, one is fee for a private event and one is a public event, and I, I don't know how, given the data we have in front of us right now, it's hard to make any decisions, but maybe there's two thresholds on size or number of attendees, and, but I don't also think we should be charging Raw $7,000. Maybe it's $1,000, maybe it's $500, but I'm, this is kind of hard with the time and the data we have.
Because again, there's an economic value to all of these events too, like you were saying, but then after the events or during the events, they go and eat, I mean, they go, it brings people to our businesses, which we've been trying to do, so this is almost the carrot, right?
Plus, plus our businesses are in, are in these, I mean, some of our businesses cook at the car show and cook at Raw, and cook at the 4th of July and the 3rd of July, and those are some of their best nights. So there is an economic advantage, but maybe we don't see it directly because of the, you know, we don't...
Back to the eating them.
But, but, so we're keeping those businesses viable, which in the long run is good for all of us.
So what I think I'm hearing then are, there's two possibilities. Either we have some kind of flat fee that we charge for events like this, or we agree that there's a public benefit, well, we have black benefit to these things, and that's something that the village is willing to absorb. So which do you, first, do you agree with, with those two options, and if you do, where do you come down on that, those two options?
I, I agree with that there's a quality of life in the village to absorb, but I also think that we should be taking a look at all of these, these things and see what, what is, you know, is Riverfest, is Ravinia? I mean, are these things the quality or the, are these things drawing the people in? Are they being used by our residents? Are they, are they worthwhile? I, I don't know that, I, you know, Ravinia, you know, it's $8,000, or, I mean, that's, that's a lot of money. It's, I, I don't know how many people go in. I'm always away that weekend. You know, is, is there a thousand people in the, in the, is there 800 people in the, in the park? Is there 500 people in the park? If there's, if there's 50 people in the park, it's not worth $8,000. But that's only, those are decisions that, you know, that you should be making.
But if there's 50 people in the park, it might only be costing us $200, so it's hard.
See, I think that's a fixed cost, because you have to surround the whole park, you have to bring in power, you have to get the...
I think, I think you start with a fee that's digestible, and then we keep evaluating and adjust from there, but I don't think we got enough information.
So with that, why don't, why don't, why don't, why don't the staff take a look at that as an option, and try to come back with, and give us some rationale for the fee that you think would be appropriate?
Because what I'm reading here is every social event in the village for the year costs the village $95,000 total. I don't think, I think that's pretty good.
It is.
Yeah, but we've got, well, minus the 40.
Okay.
Oh yeah, right, it's not even, right, it's, it's, it is, it's only 40, it's, well, 60, I guess.
Yeah, it's 60 grand. Costs us 60 grand to have all that great stuff.
Yeah, that's not a bad, that's not a bad deal.
So do you want staff to look at the possibility of a...
I think so, but I think it needs to be start nominal, a nominal amount.
Just quickly, so the, for our kinds of functions and activities, obviously, we would just continue to absorb those costs and that would, okay.
I believe that.
But they should, they should be reviewed at a...
But, but, yeah.
Yeah, like, okay.
Okay, so...
One of the main portions of trying to separate this out was so that we can answer those questions better going forward.
No, it's good data, that's good.
And to start building that database.
Yeah.
Okay, so we finally got through the fees. What's the next one? That was a list, right?
Okay. So we will come back to you at a later meeting this year with code adjustments for those fee modifications that were, we got consensus on. I'm sorry, I've lost my second page of notes. Capital expenditures discussed and obvious are also in your material, starting on page 156. Changes from the original presented capital improvement plan, a rollover of 2018 items that have occurred since then, and the addition of police bulletproof vest replacement. As mentioned earlier, currently, it is not, we are not projected to have the required funds and unaside general fund balance to transfer the amount of $301,876 to fund this current capital plan. There's a couple options for consideration on this. One option is to create a special service area for the Selborn Alley between Harlem That would be a process where those directly benefiting from that alley improvement would pay for it.
That's the one that comes out on Harlem and then goes, is that the one we're talking about?
Mm-hmm. The next option would be to remove some projects from the CIP, transfer funds from Irma, or instead of doing a fund transfer at the end of 2018 for 2019 projects, we would come to the board with fund transfers as a project by project. Fund transfer, which we would have better estimates as far as where our 2019 revenue and expenditures are coming in.
Did anyone look at what the SSA would actually be per resident on that area?
We have not gotten that far yet.
And what kind of impact that would have?
I don't know that. Thank you.
Well, I, I would suggest we look at that, get some numbers on that, I think that's the SSA.
The thought process.
And then, I like the, the last alternative of looking at these as we go along, as, as we can make a better determination of what our actual revenues and expenses are as we move through the, the year.
I would agree.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
I think that's distinctly responsible.
Anything else?
That's all I have to present tonight.
I have a question. The, the, the new levy for the special recreation, is that in here anywhere?
Yes, in the additional funds, there is a sheet for the Special Recreation Fund that includes a property tax levy of $80,000 and the expense of the membership and an estimate for inclusion.
And then cost the average rather than... 30 bucks.
Approximately $30.
Okay. Thank you.
I know, I know.
So you'd be $1,000, $8,000?
Well, that's resident, the average of tax.
Tax, okay.
Okay. That's all you need from us tonight?
That's all I need from you tonight, unless there's any other questions for staff.
Thank you, Director Johns. And thank you to our staff who did an amazing job getting this, getting this budget in[1764.25]